I'd like to call the October 4th meeting of the New Canaan Public Schools Board of Education to order. The first item on your agenda is to approve the minutes from our September 19th meeting. If I could have you all look at that and we've had a chance if someone could make a motion to approve those minutes. Sherry? May I have a second? Sangita? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. And moving on to the agenda, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as it's printed? It's, you'll note that it's been amended. We've added, in the action items, the item about the dissolution of the Strategic Planning Committee as a first read. So, if everyone's okay with that? If we could have a motion to...Penny?
So moved.
Sangita? All those in favor? Okay. All right, moving on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do you have anyone who would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition. The first item under reports and recognition is the Grade 9 through 12 Guidance Update with Dr. Bliss and the New Canaan High School Guidance Department.
Yes, and if I can just take a very brief moment to introduce our high school counseling department, all eight of whom are with us this evening, along with Sue Carroll, our school to career coordinator, and also here for our presentation tonight. You know, our high school guidance department is certainly an enormous area for us. It's a department that we take great pride in. They do their work sometimes very publicly, sometimes very privately, but always extremely professionally, always focused on our students and helping them to be their very best and be successful whatever they're doing. So, we thought it was, it's been a few years since we've had a presentation from our school counselors, and we thought the time was right for an update on some of their great work and an opportunity to hear some of their new initiatives and other things that are happening, and an opportunity for the board to ask questions as well. So, I'm very pleased to introduce Cindy Rivera, who is our department chair of the school counseling department. Welcome Cindy.
Thank you. Is this...yeah. Always the first thing. Spencer?
There you go.
This is what we always do, Spencer.
Oh, I could've done that, okay. We hope Spencer never graduates from the Canaan High School because we don't know what we'd do without him. Thank you all for having us here tonight. Dr. Lutzey said, you know, "It's been awhile." For us, it feels like yesterday, but that's okay. We're ready to present again. We're glad to do it. In this presentation tonight, we'd like you to get a sense of our philosophy, our curriculum, and our programs for students. In everything we do, we're focused on meeting the needs of our students at the high school, whether it is through whole group instruction or individualized, encompassing everything from academic guidance, college and career preparation, and social emotional development. At our core, we believe that students must be able to actively use self-reflection, that students must develop strong problem-solving skills, as well as effective communication skills, and each of our programs works towards these goals. Our department is made up of eight counselors, so we have today, we have Lori Keen, Susan Lency, Linda McGann, Jane Mitchell, Kelly Tamborino, Ann Vernon, Nick Willett, and me, and then Sue Carroll, who we've talked to, is our College and Career Center Coordinator, and two and a half secretaries that make us look good every day. Our office suite is a very busy hub, where we wear many hats, and each person in it is essential to the services we are able to offer the community. Our practices are based on our national model, outlined by both the American School Counseling Association and the National Association of College Admissions Counselors. And three years ago, we developed our Tepel Framework using these standards. I'll begin by talking about the framework within which we work. We will then talk about our programs for all students and how they unfold over the course of their years with us. Finally, we'll look at the latest trends in college admissions for our students. So, these are our six domains. The first three domains focus on what we do, the last three center on how we support what we do. So, we'll start with Domain 1. In the first domain, we focus on the student as an individual and how we may help them to access their education on a day-to-day basis. We center on the personal needs of each student, whether it is helping them to find alternative ways to speak with a teacher in order to gain better understanding in class, to find resources they did not know may exist for them, or to navigate difficult situations in their social circle or at home. Last year, nearly 2,000 student visits were recorded coming through our doors to meet with us. Many more just drop in, and then of course, our seniors tend to bop in and out so often for quick questions that we don't keep track of them, so it's a busy, busy office. In Domain 2, we're talking about planning and transition. This is where we're probably most visible to the community. We provide programs for students and parents continually talking about next steps. This starts in the 8th to 9th grade transition, where counselors work closely with the middle school to integrate students and families into the high school, and ends in 12th grade as we prepare students for life after high school. We also partner with the PFA, presenting at approximately 15 meetings each year. The goal is to help students, in partnership with their parents, make appropriate decisions for their future, helping them to understand their interests and strengths, and how to translate that into college majors and careers. We'll talk a little more about our specific grade level programs in a minute. In the last two years, we've also revamped our website to assist in keeping families informed of our programs and supplementing the information that we provide. Our presentations are taped and uploaded to our site. We've created tutorials to help students with such things as course registration or ordering transcripts. Thank you Spencer for the help with that. And Sue Carroll is constantly feeding our Facebook page and Twitter account with pertinent articles and announcements that are useful. Oh, look, we're up there already. Look how fast that was. Very good. In Domain 3, Student Advocacy and Responsive Interventions, we continually take note of our struggling students and when the programs that we provide for all students do not meet the needs of some. When a student is demonstrating difficulties academically, is highly anxious, or experiences other issues that are getting in the way of academic success, we work closely with the student, and we partner with their teachers, administration, and their parents to come up with a plan that will better meet their needs, following the RTI model. We expose them to the resources available to them and help them to move towards better success. This pertains to options and resources for both the struggling student, as well as the high-achieving student, who wishes to expand their options beyond the walls of NCHS. Last year, counselors participated in many formal meetings, nearly 300 PPTs, over 10504 meetings, and 35 team meetings, as well as countless parent meetings, emails, and phone calls to assist our students. In Domain 4, Assessment Literacy, counselors must be knowledgeable about a wide range of assessments, whether it is about standardized testing that all students take, PSAT, SAT, ACT, CAP testing, or individualized testing that looks at learning differences. We help students to understand how to use the data presented and what it means for their own learning and future planning. We also provide a number of inventories for students that help them reflect on their personality and learning strengths, and how to use the information to consider their experiences in the classroom, potential careers, and post-high school options. In Domain 5, Professional Learning and Collaboration, as counselors, we work closely with the faculty, seeking their input on students, and offering our own when they have concerns. Many of us have sat in on classes, and we attend departmental meetings that inform us of the curriculum in each area so that we can assist students in making good decisions about their classes. And then in Domain 6, Professional Knowledge and Responsibilities, we are continually updating our knowledge on college trends and admissions practices in order to provide our students with the most up-to-date information. We believe that knowing colleges and making sure that they know us are key components of the success our students have in admissions. We strive each year to help students to find the right schools and to find good matches for themselves. Counselors tour colleges around the country. We attend our national and regional conferences, and many networking sessions in the region, always seeking to put our students in the best light. We use every interaction as an opportunity to educate the college reps about our students and our record. As part of our professional knowledge and responsibilities, we also work to understand the social emotional issues that students face, and much of our school-centered professional development has focused on the issues we are seeing. Nationally, there's an uptick in students experiencing high levels of stress and anxiety, and our community does not escape this problem. We are hearing from colleges as well that this is a growing concern for them, as students arrive on their campuses experiencing burnout and the inability to manage the new challenges they face. Our first professional development in the fall looked at DBT, dialectic behavior therapies, and had to adapt those schools to the school setting for students. The Connections Curriculum this year is focusing on ways for students to better manage stressors in their lives, and even some of our parent programs have also incorporated discussion of managing the stress we see our students experience. Finally, as part of our day-to-day professional responsibilities in our office suite, we also take care of these other responsibilities, which I don't really know where those fit in with everything, so we take care of administering over 800 AP exams. We take care of the enrollment management of UConn and ECE courses, which is growing considerably, as well as online courses. Private school and summer programs that kids work on, we manage that for them. We've taken over the website manager for management for the school counseling office because it's quite a lot to manage. It's not like the typical teacher's website. And then, even, I think you know how much Sue Carroll does with the internship program, how much that has grown over the years, that we've sort of reached a tipping point there. She manages a job board that has expanded extraordinarily, and she's also the SSD Coordinator for students who test for students with disability. That's grown exponentially. The first year she did it, I think she said there were 12 students seeking accommodations. This year, 120 some odd students are seeking accommodations, which takes a great big deal of time to coordinate and organize. And then, of course, counselors are engaged in a lot of personal committee work. We're asked to sit on a lot of committees to offer our perspective on things. So, there's a lot of those little extra things that go into what we do as well. I think now we'll go with Susan, who's going to talk about 9th and 10th graders and the programs that we do there.
Before our incoming class even arrives, we work with them as 8th graders by discussing course offerings and having them meet with student leaders to answer any questions they may have about the high school. We want them to be ready, and we do everything we can to be ready for them. 9th grade is a year of transition. Counselors work with students to encourage them to assume increasing responsibility for their decisions and actions, and to develop self-awareness and independence. Our goal for this year is to help them manage the transition and build a strong foundation for successive years. Freshmen are assigned to the same counselor for all four years, so there are many opportunities for us to get to know each of our students on an individual basis. On the first day of school, we meet with our councilies in a group setting to reflect with them on how the first day went, and to let them know we are always available to help in any way we can. We encourage involvement in extracurricular activities and highlight the supports available at the high school, such as the Writing Center, the Math Center, and seeking out classroom teachers for help. Every 9th grader has an individual appointment with his or her counselor in the fall, allowing us to get better acquainted, address early academic strengths or concerns, and develop a tentative four-year academic plan. In Connections classes, all students will set goals, and this freshman meeting allows us to address those goals, as well as how they are connecting with the community through Just before midterm exams, we work with our 9th graders on a freshman learning styles inventory to help them understand their preferred environments for learning and studying. We do this in group sessions, which involve discussion and the introduction to Naviance, one of the many tools we use to create students' individual roadmaps, and encourage purposeful reflection. This learning styles focus is timely, as our freshmen head into their first experience with exams, and we often revisit this information if a student is experiencing difficulties later on. Throughout the year, we check in and monitor each student's ongoing academic progress, and if needed, facilitate supports to enhance academic and personal success. In second semester each year, we meet with all of our students individually and advise them on course selection and review again their academic goals and thoughts about the Upon returning as sophomores, the majority of our students have gained familiarity with the social, academic, and personal expectations of the high school. The goal of this year is to refine individual academic interests and plans, keeping preparation for the future firmly in mind. On an as-needed, ongoing basis, we meet with our sophomores to discuss whatever is of importance to them, encouraging them to take on appropriate challenges and seek help as needed. We start looking with them at life beyond high school, focusing on strengths and interests and finding the right fit. In the spring of sophomore year, we work with them to introduce the adolescent version of the Myers-Briggs Personality Inventory, called Do What You Are, which is designed to encourage more purposeful reflection. Through this multi-step process, they gain knowledge of potential fields of study and careers, as well as get their first experience performing a college search and exploring what the right fit means to them. Again this year, we meet with each of our sophomores to review their personal academic goals, adjusting their four-year plan as needed, and continuing to talk about strengths, emerging areas of interest, and extracurricular involvement as we head into junior year. And now Nick is going to talk about junior and senior year.
I'm a little taller here, so I'm just up a little bit. All right, good evening. I'm going to be discussing the junior year, and the objective of the junior year is for junior, the objective for junior is creating a plan for life after high school. Therefore, the focus of our work is on the college planning or the post-high school options. Our objective is to encourage students in the course of self-reflection to further define their lives after high school. It's important to understand that we meet each student where they are in this process. Each of us will meet with our group of juniors in first semester to talk about the college process and the expectations. During this meeting, we will discuss a general view of PSATs and how these scores, along with transcripts and GPAs, are used as a baseline for our discussion and prepare the students for their college search process, as well as setting a timeline for the SAT or ACT. We also ask the students to conduct a college search and develop a preliminary list of colleges to consider. Other post-secondary options, such as a gap or postgraduate year, may also be researched. This meeting is very beneficial to the students because it prepares them for what will be discussed in more detail at their junior meetings at the start of second semester, and for them to start thinking about the right college fit for their future. Individual meetings with the student, parents, and counselors begin in second semester and continue through late winter. During these meetings, counselors discuss post-high school options. We collaborate with students and families to decide on a list of schools and make appropriate recommendations based on that discussion. We again talk about the difference between the ACT and the SAT, and the possible need for subject tests, and we outline GPA and PSAT scores with historical admissions data for the colleges they wish to consider. One of the most useful and interesting forms of data for a student is the scattergrams that are found in Naviance. These graphs show the average GPAs and SAT scores of New Canaan students that have applied to a particular school. For example, up here on the screen is American University. We find these graphs to be very useful for families to understand the competitiveness of college admissions and how the students may fare in this process. Of course, admissions decisions are not made solely on the numbers. Students are read holistically by many schools, and we will discuss those factors as well. In concluding the junior meeting, we develop an action plan for the remainder of the year. As students begin to see these schools and receive the first round of test scores, they often meet with us again and again to refine their college lists. Also in the spring, counselors meet with each junior for course selection and advisement for the complex senior schedule, taking into consideration interests in high school, aspirations for college, as well as any unmet graduation requirements. By their senior year, counselors have spent invaluable time developing a connection with each of our students. This is an exciting time for both the counselor and the student because we're focusing on the future, and we get to see the excitement of our seniors as they go through the application process and are accepted at their respected schools, or following a different path, like a gap year or military service. Our goal of the senior year is to ensure that each senior is considering options for life after high school and has an action plan to realize these goals. In the first quarter of the year, we spend time with the seniors as we help them understand the many steps needed to apply to college. We understand that seniors returning will have lots of questions regarding this process, and we will help walk them through each step so they are more comfortable. Each counselor will be meeting students where they are through group sessions conducted early in the school year. This meeting will help outline the technical aspect of the process. There is much to consider in preparing applications, but we simplify the process for them using the acronym STARS. For example, the S is for senior appointment with their counselor. In this meeting, we review their cumulative high school experience, including both academic and outside interests. We also go over their college list, assuring a good range of schools that meet their criteria. Specifically, we review their prospective college list and help them narrow their focus, based on the college admissions credentials, selectivity, location, academic major, and a variety of other criteria that are important to the student. We review the students' standardized test records, developing a plan for further testing, if necessary, and submission as well. We continue our discussion with our students regarding the right fit, so the student understands whether a college is a good match for him or her, and an appropriate fit for the student's statistical data such as GPA and test scores. School counselors also work with each student to ensure that they present themselves through the college application process in the best light possible, highlighting their strengths, abilities, and talents. We achieve this by assisting the student with interviewing skills, exploring essay topics, and encouraging student to attend college information sessions. Each year, we have around 200 colleges and universities that visit our school, meeting our students, engaging them in discussion, and answering any of their questions. The representatives from these schools are generally the very first individuals that will read the student's applications. In our ongoing discussion with the college admissions representatives, we understand that effective letters of recommendation convey how the student is achieving and measured through a contextual lens. Our counselor letters are an important piece of this application. Later in the fall, school counselors will collaborate as a group on reviewing each senior's roster of intended colleges through our blind admissions review. We meet and review each student's list of college applications without using his or her name, thus the blind, and based purely on the statistical data of GPA and test scores. The goal of this process is to ensure that each student has at least a broad range of colleges where the statistics alone indicate the likelihood of acceptance. Right before the holiday break, college freshmen are invited to return to New Canaan High School in December to speak with juniors and seniors in two assemblies about their university experience, as well as reflect on their college application process. A cross-section of graduates also speaks to the Board of Education in a smaller venue. And lastly, as students hear from colleges over the course of the year, we encourage them on helping make that final decision. And now I'd like to introduce Jane Mitchell, who will be speaking about college trends.
I don't think I'm quite as tall as Nick. Good evening. The last part of our presentation will focus on the current state of college admissions. With over 95% of our seniors transitioning to four-year colleges, this is where we, as counselors, use our professional knowledge, the Domain 6 from earlier in the presentation, to help our students find colleges with the right fit for them. One of the many ways that we learn updated information about the colleges is by visiting them. Through this, we build relationships with admissions deans and their staff, in addition to having the time to share the strengths of our high school programs and our students. We are very grateful to the board for the opportunity to do this, in order that we can learn more about the colleges to better advise our students. The college admissions scene has changed a great deal. This year, over 700 schools will accept the Common Application, and combined with the introduction in 1998 of the online application, it is quite easy for a student to add further schools. These larger admission pools lead to ever lower acceptance rates. Please note on this slide that the information is not yet available for this year's entering college classes. So, these statistics are from the New Canaan High School graduating class of 2015. With these larger applicant pools, the colleges can tailor their entering class to meet their institutional needs, such as increasing the student body diversity, providing more opportunities for first-generation students, and also looking at admitting an increasing number of international students. All of these lead to increasing competition for a similar number of admission spots. So, where do our high school students apply? Since college admissions changes every year, we've chosen to highlight a comparison from four years ago. UConn remains our number-one college, and it continues to attract a large number of applications from our students. It is increasingly selective. But while their overall acceptance rate was 49%, our New Canaan High School students fared quite a bit better with an 82% acceptance rate. Every year, one or two, one or two schools become popular for our students. For example, Texas Christian, better known as TCU, was extremely popular last year. There was a 30% increase in applications from our students from four years ago, when they didn't even feature in our top 10. In 2012, 87% of our students enrolled in colleges that are rated as most, highly, or very competitive. This past year, that number rose to 88%, despite those larger applicant pools. As you can see, over the As you can see, over the past few years, more of our students are looking at schools overseas. This year, the majority of our students attending schools abroad would be rated in the most competitive category if those schools were located in the U.S., such as the University of St. Andrews in Scotland. International colleges have become increasingly attractive, since in general, their costs are somewhat lower than those in the United States, and in some instances, a bachelor's degree can be completed in three years. So what was the overall picture of last year's graduating class? It was smaller than those of previous years. 95% of the class are currently attending a four-year college. The average of 12 applications per student has remained pretty constant over the past several years. But this reflects those students who applied to one college only and were accepted under a binding early decision program, as well as students who applied to over 20 colleges. Note also that 85% of the class applied early and with excellent results. We do, however, see that this rush to apply early puts our seniors under pressure, as they are trying to settle into their most challenging classes and be involved in their myriad activities. It is a subject that increasingly comes up as we talk with our colleagues from similar high schools at conferences and also with the local DURG group. So lastly, from our students' perspective, every year, we ask our students to complete an exit survey on the Naviance software. We are happy that finding the right fit for each student is illustrated by the statistic that a large majority are now attending one of their top three choices. We have always been fortunate to be able to be supported by an outstanding administration, faculty, support staff, and Rosa's muffins, as we help these young people plan for their future. We are almost as excited as our students when they identify the college that they will attend. Cindy?
Now, I think, just questions. I can be the roving mind here.
Well, I'd like to start out by thanking all of you for coming out this evening. I know this is a very busy time of year for all of you, and so I thank you for taking time out to be with us this evening. And I also wanted to thank you for all that you do for our students and our parents in sort of helping them navigate their time at New Canaan High School. So I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions. Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask? Sheri?
So I'd just like to echo Diana's comments. I think you have an extraordinary team, and I think the support and services you provide to our community are amazing. Couple of things I'd highlight that I, as a parent and board member especially, appreciate. I really appreciate the looping model, which allows you to develop the deeper connections and relationships with your students. I also really appreciate your engagement in the parent programs through the PFA meetings, and also the website and your social media. I have, like Sue Carroll's Facebook and Twitter, I find very informative and kind of, you know, leading, bleeding-edge in terms of college trends and information that I, as both a board member and parent, would like to know. So I appreciate all of that. So just a couple of questions. My first one is, clearly, you've diagnosed this stress issue, which is not only a national issue, but perhaps even more so in such a high-achieving community such as New Canaan. So I guess my question is more, the ideas on how we can address that with our students.
Good question. I think it's something that's not easily solved, and we've been seeing it for a number of years, rising and rising. And I think last year, we had just a number of 2-on-1 calls, which are emergency calls for students who need to be hospitalized, that had gotten to that level. It was sort of a record year last year for that. So we're talking to the students over and over, and you heard over and over, we talked about fit, and the right fit, and the right match. And that has been our theme for a couple of years now, because, and we talked to the parents about this as well. It's not always the most competitive place you can be that's the right fit for your child. It may be not. And so we're repeating that message everywhere we can, and I think that's why we're trying to get into the connections classes with that message, about what does it mean to be you as a person? Who are you as a person separate from just being in the race to be better than everyone else? And take that, you know, there's a huge level of competition in towns like this, and you don't want to take away from these kids who are achieving so high. So we're always looking for that balance for those kids, where, for some kids, going that fast is exactly the right thing for them to do. For other kids, that's our whole program, is to get them to understand who they are separate from their best friend, or separate from perhaps the aspirations of their parents, to get them to think about what really is something they're interested in. And this is what colleges are asking us to do. We want to see the authentic kid. We don't want to see the well-managed kid. We want to see the kid who has true ideas about who they are and where they're going and what they want to do with their lives, which is a lot to ask of a 15, 16, or 17-year-old. But at least to get them to start talking about those things. So it's very challenging, but everything we do, I think, are things that we're trying to attack. Anything else that anyone wanted to add to that?
Just to follow up on that, and the well-managed students. So I think we see an increasing number of our students and families hiring tutors and also college placement advisors. And I'm just wondering if you could kind of address that in a public forum in terms of, is that recommended? Is that necessary? How might that be lending to the stress level? Because, you know, there's a culture now that so many students are doing this, that I have to do it too. If you could just maybe comment on that.
And actually, when we looked at the numbers last year, as much as you think everyone hires them, there weren't that many. You know, when we dove in and asked-
Do they admit to it?
Well, maybe, maybe. But many of them said that they use them just for test prep, or they use them for essays, for help with their essays, but didn't use as much for the whole college process. We do see that as an issue. It's a big concern for us. And we do try to demonstrate that we probably know as much as anyone else does out there, that between us, I think we counted up this year that we have 100 years of experience between us, and thousands of kids that have gone through the process. So we keep reminding them of that. There's just so much that we can do with that, in terms of managing that. Anything else with that, Jane?
You mentioned tutors, I think. I do get calls from parents asking me to recommend tutors. All the time, I say to them, we have an outstanding faculty here. Our faculty is here before school. They're here after school. Oftentimes, when they have what we commonly call a prep period, when they should be grading or preparing for the next class, we encourage students who, if they have a free then, to go in and see them. Yes, we have a tutor file in the office, but I'm of the opinion that you should be going, we should be encouraging them to go to the teachers, because they are simply superb here.
And in the same way, I always advise students, if they've had a math tutor for four years, they're probably in the wrong level of math, and they shouldn't be doing that. And that they will still be going on to very good colleges without being in the upper levels of math. This is one thing that a parent said to me last year. I know we talked about the goal to have every student take a college-level class, and they saw the statistic of, I think, 55% or something of the senior class, I think that was about that, took it. But what this parent took away is, well, 45% didn't take one, and they did just fine. And that was a relief to that parent, was that my student isn't going that direction, and that worries me, that they're not able to manage that. And so we are always saying to them, yes, there's that statistic, but then look at the 95% who go on to four-year schools, most of which are competitive or better colleges. So our kids do very well, and I think, again, they continue to compare themselves and think they're not doing enough. And we do have a nice article about being good enough, and it's something that we do talk to our kids often about, around those things.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Sangita?
I'm going to have to say thank you again, too. I think, you know, your whole department is just amazing. I have two kids who went through the process, and I don't know what they would have done without all the counseling help that we got in terms of doing it. I think you do a great job preparing students to go to college, and then, as you can see, we got that great rate of 95%, you know, attending a four-year college and getting into competitive school. My question kind of goes along with what Sheri was saying. You do a terrific job of preparing the parents and giving them lectures and such, but with the students, even if they sometimes find the right college, if they're on the right track, today, there's been so much put on these kids' shoulders in terms of the testing, the high performance, with the early apps now, where you have to take the hardest classes, that it's just a lot of stress, even just because there's not enough time to do everything they do. I mean, these kids, I found my kids, you know, not having enough time to sleep, and there was nothing I could cut out, really, to be able to give them that. So I was wondering, is there a way, or maybe that we need to look at, you know, ways for students to be able to deal with the stress, maybe having courses of how to cope with, you know, whether it's looking at meditation, doing yoga, music, you know, some other ways, because each kid is different, and, you know, what appeals to them, to give them that 10 minutes of just, like, let that release out. And also time management, because sometimes, you know, a teacher can tell you how to do this classwork really well and this classwork, but they don't know how to put it all together. It's a tough skill for adults, you know, much less these kids. And then, like I said, we pile everything on them, that, you know, that junior and senior year. So I'm thinking, is that something that, you know, we could take a look at?
I think that's what the Connections curriculum is all about this year. There's mindfulness in there. There is different versions of that and talking about that. Time management is one of the issues that we talk about, that we have particular little mini lessons for the kids on all of this. And then, in talking with the parents, we try to dispel some of those myths that they can't drop anything, and they can't step it back, and they can't walk it back. They must, they must, they must. Those, in a lot of cases, are myths and need to be talked about with a parent around that. And that's a very difficult conversation to have, to have parents understand that, in understanding who their child is and what they can and can't do. And that's a much bigger conversation. But we just had our junior parents in for a PFA thing, and I think that went well around talking about those actual topics.
The Connections program, is that, does every child go through that? I'm not that familiar still-
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was called Advisory, and then it was called Mentoring, or it was Mentoring, then it was Advisory, now it's called Connections. Every student has a Connections class every other Wednesday. It's about a 20-minute session where kids meet in small groups, and with the teacher or administrator as their group leader, and they have a curriculum that they follow around those issues.
Hazel?
I also wanted to start with a thank you, so that, on a little bit different angle of the things that I hear that you're doing. I think that the individualized attention, that you match each student with the college that's the one that's the best for he or she, I think is an extraordinary effort, and is one that's really appreciated, and the way that you keep in touch with the colleges to make sure what they're all about, and the visitations and the understanding, I think, is a really important part of it. I know that a few years ago, on the board, we asked the question, are you able to visit the schools the way you'd really like to be visiting them, or is it something that we need to be adding to that on the budget? Because there are, again, it's important to walk onto the campus. It's one thing to have somebody say, everybody's nice there, and then if you go and no one's nice, you're not really feeling what they've been saying is exactly accurate. And that's important when you're working with students and the families, too. And so that was my question, to ask that, if you need more resources to keep that relationship going with the colleges and be able to visit the ones that are geographically, maybe not immediately, in the area.
Yeah, you heard the international thing, huh? Getting our passports ready. I think you've been very generous, and I think it is sufficient at this point, the monies that you have given us. It's more the time away that we can't take a whole lot of time, because we need to be here. But so far, it has been something we've been able to work within at this point.
Cindy, perhaps on that topic, you can share with the board how you select which colleges you visit?
Good, okay. At the end of the year, after everyone's made their decisions, and sort of in June, as we're wrapping up the year, May and June, we look at our full statistics, where students have applied, where they've decided to go, what the admittance rates were on all those colleges, who wasn't particularly good to us this year. And we look at those and decide where we need to develop relationships further. So we will pinpoint the colleges that we've been disappointed in, or thought it was not the kind of year we wanted to have. So we've looked at a number of things, and we've also targeted the schools that suddenly have become very popular. You know, a popular football player goes there, so then we know the next year it's going to be high on everyone's list. That we will make sure that we get there, to make sure we understand what was good about that school. So a number of factors come into play, but usually, it's that final end of the year, look at what we've done, where kids have ended up going, and where kids have not gotten in where we expected them to get in, that we will target those schools for the next year.
And it sounds like not only do you learn more about the colleges you're visiting, but they learn more about New Canaan as well.
Absolutely. We do want to make sure that they understand who we are and what our programs are about. And we do the same when the college reps come in here. I think we sort of attacked one school today and said, why have you not taken our kids? And made sure they understood why they should be taking them. We were very nice about it, but why they should, they look a little more closely. And come, let's show you our engineering program and our Makerspace, which seems to have gotten a lot of kudos from colleges. They've been particularly impressed by that, so.
Okay, thank you. Maria?
I have to thank you, too. You've gotten one daughter into college, and we're working on the next one. Thank you, Mr. Eller. I just wanted to go back to a little bit of what Sangita and Sheri were saying about the stress, and how much, is there any way to build a mechanism in where students can be more self-directed about how time is used, especially in the junior and senior year? For example, if Connections is adding rather than subtracting, you know, because I know they're put in a position where there's, a lot of times, they're in there and maybe they have other stuff to do, so they're always try- I think they're very much pleasers, so how can we give them a little more latitude in how they use that time? And then the other question was, how do we see the Connections curriculum itself, you know, and get feedback as parents as to what's covered?
We have a committee who does that, so we could, I'm sure we could certainly share that with parents. I don't think we have built this year at all. We haven't shared the-
I was just about to take a look, see what's online.
Okay, there you go. But we certainly could. There's nothing that would make good sense. In terms of the juniors and seniors, we do think about that each year, whether we'd rather mold it to more of a guidance curriculum, perhaps, you know, college admissions for seniors, juniors, second semester, perhaps making it more about goal-setting and direction like that. We haven't gotten there yet, but that conversation does continue to go on as to how do we tailor it more as they're getting older and really facing things, a different subject area that they're doing. So it's absolutely worth talking about.
I think time is the issue for the kids, too.
Absolutely.
Just a way to synthesize the goals so that, take something off their plate.
Right. And we do that also for juniors and seniors, in that they're not required to take as many classes. They've usually, many of them have finished their electives, they have a little more free time during the day. Whether they use that time wisely, you know, some kids do very well with that, others not as much, but they do have more space in their, for many of them, they have more space in their schedules, others just choose to take more courses, because that's who they are. But there is more flexibility in junior and senior year that we could, if a student needs that. And we have done that for the student who truly is having difficulty to limit, to break down their schedule, and certainly reduce it, if they're, you know, in such shape that they need that.
Thank you. Penny?
I was wondering, how are we doing, in your estimation and compared to our peer group, on the ratio between counselors and students? We're at, I think, 159 now. I seem to remember our goal-
We're around 165 each.
165 each?
Because I have a reduced load, so. Because I have a reduced load, so.
Okay, 165 each. And is that what our goal was? I mean, when we...
I think, I think we're still pretty healthy in terms of our ratio of students to counselor.
Healthy high number or are we in the target range that we were looking at?
I think we're in the target range, that, that makes good, I mean, it's pretty good compared to our, our dark schools. We are on the lower side of that. I think for, for us, the issue is the other add-ons, the other responsibilities that have been growing for us. The internship program, the AP program, the UConn courses, the online courses, those types of things have, have started to weigh on us in terms of extras that we do, that we, takes away from the time we spend with, with students. So if any place there was something we could do, the students with disabilities that Sue Carroll manages, I mean, that, those are all pieces of, of our job that, that take us away from our work in a lot of ways because they're more administrative or they're, you know, in that way. So I think that if ever there was something to talk about where we wouldn't mind if somebody would help us with, it would probably be in those arenas for getting, whether as a test coordinator or, or someone that would manage some of that for us.
Well, maybe we...
Sangita?
I had a couple of other questions.
No, go ahead.
I was also wondering if in your review of applications from our students and how our students getting, getting into different colleges and universities do, if you think there are any academic programs at the high school that we should look at adding additional offerings or, you know, trying to put a little bit more emphasis on? Like, do our students who are in music get into this, I mean, you know, we're looking at all the different areas, science, foreign languages, arts, are there programs we ought to be focusing on?
I think we, we're pretty well, we do a good job with that. I, I think, you know, the state had started talking about a capstone project or a senior project. I don't know where they are about that. That's sort of been delayed for a while.
Graduating class of 2022.
Okay, so.
You're welcome.
Couple of years away. I think, you know, talking about kids with, and we see a lot of kids now liking the idea of independent study or the internship program, where they're able to do something different than go to class every day. So that, that could be somewhere that we would be looking at that. I think our science research program has grown quite a bit and perhaps, you know, right now, there's one teacher managing that and she loves it, but I can see where that's growing, more and more kids are, are getting involved with it and that at some point may be getting bigger than, than that.
I think this year, Jim Zamborano has done a terrific job by adding on some new STEM courses, you know, game design, web design, robotics, we, I think are fine arts. The program is richer. And in a sense, with these great programs, students want to take those courses. So sometimes when they do, when they have finished their electives, whereas perhaps five years ago, they would say, okay, finished electives, now I want more frees. Now they're saying things like, oh, robotics, oh, maybe I can fit that in. So it's sort of a double-edged sword almost.
And I know this year, we added additional sections of the music tech class as well, right? So now we've gone in the last couple of years from 10 sections of that to, I think, 12 or 14.
Right, very popular course with our students, yes. Yeah, there's quite a few of them. The AP computer science, the kids are reporting, they're loving that course this year. That's new to us this year, so my guess is that's going to grow next year because it's become quite popular. So the business courses too have become more popular this year. So I, we see improvement in a lot of places around that. So I mean, there's, there's so many different directions you could go with that. Just a little bit of money, you know, can go a long way in time and training.
What would be the next area you might ask, you might think we would look at, if any? Or you can get back to us on that.
If, if. I mean, if you want to think really big, you'd think the IB program, but that's, you know, huge, international baccalaureate, but...
I know I said we have a lot of time, Cindy, but that's... I, I do want to say this, though, one of the things that we're, we're very fortunate to be able to do is, in almost real time, we're able to be responsive to the students' desires and needs and sort of, and interests, so that our program's flexible enough where we can add, we add sections at different times and we're able to meet those student needs, which is, is very important. You know, the, we canvass the students, they put their schedule together, their requests, and then we build our schedule in response to those requests, where many schools say we only have five sections of this class and then once we're full, no more students can take it. So we've, you know, really worked hard to be responsive to the student interests. And so in some ways, it's, you know, talking to them in advance to see where those, those resources will go and which programs will expand.
So if I could, just maybe one follow-up question. I don't, I don't have a personal example from New Canaan High School, but I've known a number of students that have gone into specific academic areas when they get to college and sometimes don't feel like their training is up to snuck for the specific course that they wanted to do. And I'm wondering if, I haven't seen that from, in New Canaan, but I'm just wondering if, if we've had experiences like that where students have come back and said, gee, you know, it would have been really helpful if I'd had this course. Or if the students, I mean, when we, the students we meet with in December are really pretty happy with what their training has been.
They all want a philosophy course, right? They, they all say they wish they had a philosophy course. But yes.
I think the, the upside on all of that is that every year they come back and you hear them tell us how well they know how to write. And they'll say to us over and over, my roommate didn't know how to write a paper. And they know how to write a paper while they're here with us, they're moaning a lot about how much we make them learn to write a paper. But I think those are the kinds of things that colleges do tell us, they really don't want them specializing so much at the high school level. I think they, they would like them to have exposure to things like computers and whatever, but I think that for the most part, they want them to experience the broader breadth of course offerings.
Sangita?
Just had a question to follow up on, you know, your college visits to the different colleges. Have you noticed any trends or anything when you go out to a college and you say like, how come you're not taking our New Canaan students who are terrific? Do they have any things where they say, maybe the way it's presented or certain areas why some other high schools have a stronger candidate or not, or really, does that not exist? I mean, is...
Well, yeah, I don't know what, every college has institutional needs and, and so we do ask them that, what do they need and what, what are they looking for? And I think, like Jane and I traveled to the Midwest last year and we were at University of Illinois and really...
We don't have many. I can't contain myself.
But we were really surprised, well, we talked about AP computer, about computer sciences, that's one of their huge majors there. And a number of schools who have that as a very big major, it's very competitive for our students to ever get into a computer science class. So we were asking them, what, what do these kids have that you take these kids over others? And they've had much more programming and app development. So I think we are doing a lot in terms of changing what we do at the high school to bring that into focus for our students, so that the kids who are interested in that will have some avenues here to study it a little bit further.
Were there any other areas besides the computer science? Has anyone heard or, no?
I don't think so.
I think we did a good job.
I think, yeah, generally, I think we do a good job and we, we could name, name students pretty well for each, each thing that they had talked about wanting to see.
Sherri?
Tech experts.
Tech experts.
They do like the, the technical background of some of our kids who do the kinds of things that Spencer does.
So I'm sure you also go to Clemson.
They did, yeah.
So one of the things I really love is the, with the internship program, the job preparedness training that you've put in place. My question is, I think there's a slice of that which is looking at your social media presence and kind of appropriately cleaning that up. And I'm just wondering if we should look at moving that earlier, like maybe much earlier as many or most of our middle school students have phones and are on social media and their profiles really began at a much earlier age. But, but I love that training and I love that piece of the training and I'm just wondering if we've considered applying that earlier.
I would love to answer that question. So we really have built up the digital citizenship curriculum at the middle school and I think it would be a great idea to have them come and do a presentation for you to let you know where we are. But we really have taken into consideration the feedback that we've been receiving from particularly the seventh and eighth graders. And one of the big pieces is the social media. And so we've done a lot of tweaks this past summer and are trying to address that with our seventh and eighth graders. So I think it would be very appropriate to come and do a presentation and give you a good understanding of where we are with that curriculum in the middle school and how we freed them from the elementary into the middle school. But we too recognize that you need to start in the middle school.
Jen?
So I just have to say thank you. I don't have any questions, but I've spent a lot of time, I've been at the high school for three years now and I've spent a lot of time in the guidance department the past few months. And anyway, you guys are amazing. You juggle so many things and I've been really impressed by, you know, all the information that you give out at the PTC meeting or the PFA meetings and, you know, when you're meeting with students. So it's, I know it's not easy, but it's, it looks fun, the way you guys do it. And, and so incredibly appreciative of everything. Even the Connections program, like, I didn't really know a lot about that until, you know, the past couple of years. And I think it's great that we can bring the kids together in small groups. It is such a big school and a little daunting and I think it's really cool that you bring them together through those four years. I think that's a really good program and I just, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I have two questions. The first is actually for Sue, you haven't gotten much tonight, Sue, so. And it's really, has to do with this incredible growth in the internship program that we've had. And so, you know, it's a wonderful thing, but, you know, we do have kids that stay behind. And so, you know, are, how are we looking at, you know, providing a, a rich experience for those kids who choose, for whatever reason, not to do an internship program? Or are we, you know, moving in a direction where we're encouraging everyone? You know, I just would like to get a sense for how that's...
Well, I'm not so sure next year or this coming spring, you're going to have that many left behind because we just conducted a survey and got 205 hits in a week. 91% of the students will, are intending to be interns. So this conversation might be for naught. However, I did talk to a few teachers last spring, a little too late to actually get it off the ground. But my intention was this, for teachers that had a predominantly large senior course load, I'm thinking senior English, for example, for those kids who stayed behind because they were silly, I would offer my services to come in and we would still do some resume writing. We would do our LinkedIn sign up. We would do a little bit of interviewing skills, trying to get them up, trying to polish them up a little bit before they left. And also a discussion with them maybe on what the best use of the first couple of weeks of college would be like for them, so that there would have a little bit of a bridge. I think the internship, detaching the student from school, makes the separation to go on to college a little bit easier. And the students that were left behind would have had some of that information also. So, you know, maybe that would be something that we could look into.
And then...
I also, just to say, informally, I know a number of teachers grouped together to work together on some curriculums around that, so, around joining.
Well, it'll be exciting to see how, you know, this, this next couple of senior classes handle the, you know, and how you manage all the placements.
Well, stay tuned on that one.
And then I just had one other question and I kind of asked it last, last meeting to the middle school counselors as well. I mean, beyond, beyond student stress, what are you seeing in our students and, you know, that you might not have seen five, five years ago? And are we resourced appropriately to address those concerns? You know, you know, I mean, I, I constantly see, you know, in the paper, we're all seeing, I mean, unfortunately, you know, members, graduates of this high school, you know, are recent graduates, having, having, falling into, you know, addiction and, and things like that. And I don't know if that's stress related, if that's, if that's something else. But if there's something that we can be providing as a district that would help these students cope better or, you know, I don't know. So it may be not a question to answer tonight, but I think something to think about as we, you know, head into budget season and are there things that we need to be doing in the district to really help our kids manage? I don't know if there...
I don't have an answer for that. I mean, I think our school climate committee has, has thought about that. I think our, our kids in crisis counselor who will be coming in shortly is someone who is well experienced and we're excited to have her come in to work with a, a certain population of kids that we see at risk. So I think, I mean, I don't think that's any change from 10 years ago or anything. I think that that has been an issue all along for, for some kids. We do hear that there is a growing concern around heroin use in towns like ours and in the surrounding towns and that certainly is frightening to us. But at this point, something we discuss, but we don't have an answer, I think.
But I will say, and one, one function that you didn't talk about tonight is your involvement in the crisis team and the mental health team. And the department meets along with other members of the mental health team here at the school every Friday. And I, having been a part of those meetings for three years, I know the great detail of those conversations and really the working together as a team to identify and address issues preemptively, to work with individual students and families in, you know, private but hopefully effective ways and sort of, and that, that pooling of work together. And I think that's another, when I initially said, there's things we, you do privately and some things publicly, that's some of the private work that are, each of you does with your families, with your, your children, you know, your students. And that's some, some very, very important work that goes on every day. So I just, I want to commend you for those efforts and say that there are systems in place such as that where, you know, you do work together to try to identify those issues and, and try to, you know, help families that need help and help students and children who need, need some support, so.
And that team includes our resource officer and the nurses administration. So it is a wide team that sits and talks about trends we're seeing and concerns we have. And that's very helpful that we work together to, to look at ways that we can do better around those issues.
Well, I would just say, as, as we head into budget season, I would ask that you really, you know, with Mr. Egan and, and, you know, the psychologist, you know, thoughtfully consider the needs around that because I think the whole community, it's not, it's not just a Board of Ed issue. I think the whole community is seeing it and I think they would be supportive. So if you, you know, anyway.
Penny?
I just like to say, I don't get actually many emails from my son, but I did get one saying, could you ask the Board of Ed and could you think about what we can do to support the students and to try and prevent some of the drug deaths that we've had? His class has lost three students, which is obviously way too many. And so I would, for all the community, ideas that we have and, and something that we can build into our budget and maybe we can be smarter someplace else to try and support students at as early an age as we need to, to diminish that possibility would be something I'd really like to see.
Very good. Sangita?
Those lines, I mean, do you see trends? I mean, I know you showed that, just where the kids are going to school in 2012 versus 2016. Is there just general trends you've seen over the change in attitude of students in terms of going, you know, life after school or, you know, or the choices they're making are really, is there nothing?
I think every class is a little bit different, I think. And each of us has a different probably take on it. For me, I think my students are looking at larger schools. They, they want the big schools and they're, they're more interested in that more so than the smaller, rural arts schools. So that seems to be the trend. That may be based on... That may be based on the economy, and that may be based on students feeling like they need, in some of those larger schools, much more business-oriented and skills-oriented than a liberal arts school, whether it has anything to do with that or them just feeling like they want to go to a larger school. Anything else that we've seen in terms of that?
No, no one looking.
Curiously, I'm just.
I, I do think that we're all concerned about this rush to do everything early. We, kids think they have to apply somewhere early, and for some kids, they've thought about it long and hard, and it's the right thing. But for some students, it isn't, because they really should spend the first semester showing the strongest grades that they can get, but also spend the time thoughtfully considering where they're going to go. So, I think this is a national trend, because it is so easy to apply to so many schools now, but we keep telling them more is not necessarily better, and I think that that's something that we all as a community can say, just because your friend is doing it doesn't mean you need to, but sometimes that falls on deaf ears.
Right. Part of the challenge, as I understand it, is that colleges are incentivized to have as many students apply as possible, so that they can reduce their acceptance rate and look more competitive. So, while we're trying, working with our students, the marketplace is sending them the opposite message, trying to get them to apply to as many as possible for that reason. So, I, I know it's yeoman's work, and I know you do it well and calmly, and.
And that certainly is the conversation at the national conferences. You know, the high school counselors stand on one end and say, "Stop giving this message", and the college at the other, "Well, we have to. We have our agendas that we have to meet as well."
He is, so we have to.
Yes. And the same thing goes with sports, athletic recruiting going earlier and earlier, and the fact that we have, what, a ninth grader who's already committed to a school is a little silly, that, that, that that is happening for our school kids. And, and for many kids, sophomore, and by sophomore year, they're committing to schools. Speaks volumes of our athletic program, but it's not particularly great for our kids, so.
Hazel?
I just wanted to go back for one minute to Sue and her fabulous program that's been so, really, what a wonderful capstone for the senior year. And I realize that as it's grown, excuse me, excuse me, as it's grown, it's been harder and harder to find places for the kids. And I thought maybe this might be an opportunity, although it seems like a small group in this room, we are on television, and there are people who watch this, and we also have the press here to represent, and they can perhaps help us with different things and getting out to the community. Are there any areas that the students are particularly interested in that you haven't been able to meet that need?
Thank you for asking. I think that, as I said in May, when I had the pleasure of your company, we have done such a great job with the STEM curriculum and music technology, for example. But New Canaan is not the rap capital of the world, and nor are we actually the technology and science capital. So, kids are going to come in and ask for internships or want these fields. Business is easy for us. Education is easy for us, but the science and technology is more difficult. So, I would put out my feelers as far as anything that could attach themselves to that kind of an internship would be wonderful to hear from people. Two oh three, five nine four, four six six four.
Your calls will be answered as fast as we can answer them.
And that's the same for our science research kids hoping to intern in the summer, that Jess Zick does a really good job of getting some of our kids to do these interns, internships at Yale and Albert Einstein, Columbia in some ways, but we do need, I think she probably could use some, some more internship sites, and whether it's under her purview to actually go out and search for them, or if we could get some help for her around finding some other science internship sites would be great for summer programs for our kids. They really, the ones who get to go find it just so interesting for them and illuminating for, for their own careers.
Maria?
I just wanted to add, when we were talking about the stress and meeting to find ways to address stress with students, I don't know if there's, if this is already done, but do administrators at the schools kind of have a, an interfaith, a way to meet the youth ministers at the different faith organizations around town, so you can kind of share, you know, so the message comes down to the kids. When you're stressed, you can meditate, you can pray. Is there anything, maybe we can think about that if it doesn't exist.
Right. I, I know that some of the, the youth groups in, in town do a great job with the kids around these issues. Kids do report that to us, so it's well-used, but whether we've had, actually had conversations with them now.
At the high, that's what I'm thinking, at the high level, to kind of just share.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. It's really informative and helpful, so thank you.
Yes, and now I have the pleasure of letting you know, you have no obligation to stay. Thank you so much. It was wonderful to get the overview. And as I, they were able to cover all of those slides in 27 minutes. I said, "But, but the board won't be able to answer, ask their questions in 27 minutes", so. That's good. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything, is it self-explanatory in the binder itself to go through? Great. Thank you all. Great job.
Thank you very much. Okay. The next item on our agenda this evening is the Board of Ed Committee Reports. And so, we have a few committees, standing committees, that would like to report. And I guess I'm looking to my left, and I see Mr. Cronin over there, so. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
The Special Committee on Governance, as you know, recently completed the review and approval of Series 9,000 bylaws of the board. So, our next step as a committee will be reviewing policy. So, we're moving on from bylaws to policy, and we're starting with communication policy, which is Series 1,000. So, we hope to bring a first read to the board within the next few meetings, followed by the necessary edits, the necessary committee meetings, and then we'll bring a second read to the board for Series 1,000 sometime in November for approval. And shortly thereafter, we'll move on to our next series, which is Personal Policy, Series 4,000.
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank Tom. This is a lot of heavy lifting, this, this committee, so, and I appreciate all the, all the effort, and I think you've masterfully, you know, helped bring this through, the bylaws through the, through the, the board. So, does anyone have any questions, or can move on to the next committee report? So, why don't we have Sheri do Communication?
So, Communications Committee is Ms. Richardson, Ms. Notton, and myself as chair. And central to our update is the progress that's, that's been made by the district to reposition the PICs role into a more strategic communications resource, which we're very excited about. This is a position that our committee recommended and has advocated for in the budget process, and we are certain that the redefined role will be critical to institutionalizing our recommended communications protocol, so we're very excited about that. We're also very pleased with the priority focus that all of our school administrators give to communicating with stakeholders. This includes participation in PTC, PFA meetings, newsletters, emails, website, and social media at the middle and high school levels. And Mr. Egan just left, but he does a brilliant job, you know, tweeting and all that stuff he does on Facebook to keep his stakeholders informed. So, we're confident that this multimedia approach is reaching our stakeholders, and we do, though, continue to conduct a quarterly focus group with our BOE parent reps to disseminate key information and also collect feedback on how we can further improve our communications process. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 3rd at 10:00 a.m., and we always welcome any other stakeholder input via our BOE emails. So, anything, if Jen or Maria would like to anything, or?
Okay. Well, you guys have done a great job. I mean, I think the communication has been, you know, just a phenomenal improvement over the last couple of years, so thank you very much. I'm going to give, unfortunately, Brendan was called out on business at the last minute. I think it's becoming like, you know, there must be some divine intervention when there's committee reports, that he has a business, a last-minute business obligation. So, I feel terrible, because he's done a yeoman's job in, you know, bringing a lot of educational resources, issues forward. So, but yeah, so Brendan is the chair of that committee, and since our last committee report, a major committee accomplishment is the approval by the entire board of our facilities usage rates. We did that at our July 18th meeting. I know it feels like forever ago, but that was within the, the reporting period, so, and, and Brendan did an amazing job of bringing that forward. In addition, the committee has worked with Dr. Keating and Dr. Lutzey to institutionalize a process whereby, prior to any board meeting, we get approval of the inter-account transfers being sought. The committee meets with them to kind of go over those, those transfers, so that, you know, we're aware of what's going to be happening before it's brought into the full board at the next meeting. And, and finally, I've been attending the Audit Committee meetings. They're always thrilling, you know, but I, what I would say is that it's really amazing to see how much more comfortable that committee has become with the financial statements of the board and the processes that have been put in place. And, you know, every, every year, it just, it keeps getting more and more, you know, they just, the, the process gets better. So, thank you to Dr. Keating and Dr. Lutzey, and, and, you know, it's, it's been a, it's a great, a great working partnership, so. And thank you to Hazel, who's also on the committee. So, we, that's it. That's all I have to report. So, the last committee, I left, I saved the best for last, is Sangita with Strategic Planning.
Since our last committee report, in September, on September 8th, we had a strategic planning workshop, which was with Dr. Lutzey, our superintendent, and the entire Board of Education members. And we reviewed different thoughts about strategic planning. In the past couple of years, we've been looking at, you know, what the process plan would, would be in order to come up with a strategic plan for a vision and where the, the district would like to go. And in that process, we've been learning a lot. We talked about 21st century skills. We passed around a book that, for the board members to read, to learn about where education is going and what's required. And we also had Jonathan come in for another workshop, and Jonathan is an educational specialist who works a lot with boards on strategic planning. But he came a, a year ago to speak just about the future of education and where he sees education going and what other school districts are doing. And in all this, we had thought originally about going in one direction with the process plan of, of doing a large group, getting together, doing meetings, and figuring this all out, which kind of seemed a lot to do. And as we're going through this, we realized, though, we're reading these 21st century skills, that our district is doing a really good job of meeting those skills, you know, for these students, that many of these things that people are looking to do, we're already doing it. And that's thanks to our administration, our superintendent leadership. And so, we kind of wanted to look back again to see, like, is this the best process? And is it something that should be led by the Board of Ed Subcommittee, or is this something, which I have to say, one of the things as a board we did very well is the superintendent that we picked. We have a superintendent who is very knowledgeable about this area, who knows what's going on nationally and in the state. This is an area of expertise for him, because he enjoys working on, seeing where education's going, and is very forward-thinking, that the best person to take the lead on this would really be our superintendent. So, rather than going through a process plan that's built up by a subcommittee, I think we've come to a place where understanding all of the materials around, that the best approach going forward now, because it is a difficult process, we are such a good performing district. That was one thing that, you know, Mr. Costa had brought up, is that it's difficult when you're at the top. We have a 95% rate of kids going to four-year college. Our graduation rates are terrific, so how do you keep improving on that? How do you keep going forward? And that might be an area that no one's really figured out yet, because we're kind of at the top. And so, we have to look at it a different way of, of how to approach this. And so, one of the benefits of Dr. Lutzey leading this as the superintendent is that he can also bring in all the key people into the process, you know, with the administration, their timing on this, look at what areas, because they've already been working on a lot of areas, and then also bring in the whole Board of Education. So, at this point, the committee is recommending that we dissolve the committee, the Strategic Planning Committee, because we were chartered to come up with a process plan, and now we've come up with this new direction, and so that it is no longer needed to, to continue on. And so, we'll be asking for a vote to dissolve the committee tonight. And I know, Dr. Lutzey, if you'd like to add anything, or Hazel, Hazel and Dr. Lutzey have been working together, uh, with me on the Strategic Planning Committee.
Well, I think what, what I'd like to add is to say what a wonderful job both you and Hazel have done throughout this entire process, you know, trying to get, get something off the ground and really to have the board focus in this area. And it really does take a lot to get to the place, I think, that we are in now, where we've really taken a look at what we're doing, how we're doing it. We looked at the, the district goals, we looked at the, some of the processes that are there, and said, you know, we're not looking for a reinvention. You know, what we're looking at is working on iterative steps to continue to improve the good work that we're doing, and be sure that we're working in alignment with where we want to be in, in 10 years, in five years, in 20 years, as we piece all of this together. And instead of having someone come in who's done this in multiple areas, multiple ways, and sort of follow a, a prescribed process, instead, we're sort of generating that process to be specific and appropriate and fitting and unique for our needs here in New Canaan. And that's thanks to both of your leadership and involvement throughout this process. And I just want to commend you for all of your efforts to getting us to the point that we're at now. We wouldn't be here without all of your good work. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions before we move to the action items section of the agenda? Okay. So, we'll move on. So, given our committee report on strategic planning, the first item on our action item is the dissolution of the Board of Ed Strategic Planning Committee, its first read. So, if I could get a motion to approve as a first read the dissolution of the Strategic Planning Subcommittee in accordance with New Canaan Public Schools Board of Education Bylaw Number 9310B? Sangita? May I have a second? Hazel? Okay, so, we don't need a vote tonight, because it's just a first read, and we'll have a vote during our second read.
If I can just share, just the, the process in the bylaws, and you should have a copy in front of you, Bylaw 9130, Page B. If, a couple of paragraphs into standing committees, it says, "The board will, can vote to dissolve a standing committee by two-thirds majority vote of the full board after two reads." So, it's through the bylaws that enable on, enable the board to, to do this, but it does take two reads and a two-thirds vote.
All right. Moving on, the next action item is the Board of Ed meeting schedule for the 2017, our second read. I just, before we go to move to vote, I wanted to point out two amendments to the schedule that you received, and they're highlighted on the agenda that you have in front of you. The September 5th meeting, it just needed to be noted that it's the first Tuesday of the month, because it's the day after the holiday. And then, the, the bigger change is that we've added a December 11th meeting, because we didn't have the Board of Ed Budget Workshop included in the past read. So, I would love to get a motion, or is there any discussion on it before?
I guess my, my only point would be that these are the meetings that will go to the town clerk prior to the end of January, so they'd be set up as the special meet, or regular meetings. And if the board were to decide at a later date that didn't want to have, say, a third meeting in December, it's very easy to take it off the board, so to speak. It's more difficult to put it on, because if it's not included in those meetings that go prior to the end of January, then a meeting is considered a special meeting, which means there's, the agenda cannot be edited or revised once the meeting begins, within 24 hours of the meeting.
Do we have, do we have three in December last year?
Yes. We always do.
One of them is a workshop, and we'll, we'll feed you dinner.
We do have to have a Board of Ed Budget Workshop, I think, as, yeah, but. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Exactly. We're talking December of 2017.
Yes, yes. Penny.
I know we would probably cancel it, but sometimes you've scheduled more meetings in the summer. Would we want to schedule another regular meeting, knowing that we would then poll members and cancel one, so that it would be a general meeting rather than just two? These dates are probably the best, but I just didn't know if you wanted the flexibility to...
Add additional dates.
Well, you can always add a meeting, but then it's a special meeting, so you can't change the agenda.
Right, no agenda.
So that was my only question, if you wanted to add one in now, so that you could poll us later and then cancel the one that had the least attendance.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense, because...
I'm happy to...
It's a ways away, and we don't know where our schedules are.
Okay. I'm happy to consider that. I'm, yes, I agree. It is easier to cancel a meeting than to add it.
Right.
Let me pull up a calendar, because...
Then I would suggest that we, that the board considers adding Monday, July 31.
Okay.
Given that the Monday, the 3rd, is the 4th of July holiday.
Yes. I'm guessing...
I can already tell you, I won't be here that Monday.
The board could also consider...
You just like to make work for me, Penny.
Maybe it wasn't a good suggestion.
August 30, I will say July 31, if, just to have two meetings, to have one later in July.
Might not be worth it.
Well, it does help us as far, if we were to have the meeting for enrollment information and things like that. Having the beginning of July is very close on the heels of the close of school.
Okay.
Yeah, this would give us, if we had it the 17th and 31st, we'd have some options.
Okay. All right, why don't we, is everybody, well, we'll get a vote on that, but let's... We already know two board members that are going to be there, so. Okay, so, so those, so we'll have three edits to the first read on the Board of Ed Summer, or 2017 meeting schedule. The, everybody clear on that, the amendments? Okay, so could I get a vote to approve as a second read the 2017 schedule of Board of Ed meetings as first moved and seconded by Mr. Hayes and Ms. Richardson, respectively, on September 19, 2016, as amended? Sangita.
Do I have to say this, but do we first need to approve?
I already asked, no. I already asked.
Okay, sorry.
I was like, I asked the same question.
Except as amended.
And second, may I have a second? Sheri? All those in favor? It's unanimous? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Hazel? Second. Sheri? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Lutzey?
So as a reminder, our next Board of Education meeting is October 17. Hard to believe, but today I saw an email going around at the high school that progress reports for the first marking period are due. So parents and students can expect progress reports to be out in the next couple of days, which means that we are, well, at that point, we're about an eighth of the way through the school year. It's hard to believe, isn't it? Yeah. The, but at our next Board of Education meeting, we'll be sharing with you the results from last year's standardized assessments and other information, and following the format we did last year, where we really took a K-12 look at the, sort of some of the results and some of the metrics that are used across the board, and Dr. Crenti and Mr. Egan, and I'm sure some other folks will be sharing all that with the board. And then we'll have our second reading of the Strategic Planning Subcommittee dissolution.
Thanks, Amy. Perfect. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn? Sangita? Second. Maria? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.